All right, we're going to call to order tonight's regular City Commission meeting for December 18th. Do we have a roll call table?
Mayor?
Here.
Mr. Tedder?
Here.
Mr. Scribner?
Here.
Mr. Reddington?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Present.
I have a question tonight. We have Pastor Jordan Counts from Park Avenue Baptist Church here.
This is great. Father God, we thank you for this time together. We thank you that you are the author of all that is, that you are the Creator, Redeemer, and Sustainer. We thank you for the reason for this season. Help us remember the Christ child. And we ask for your presence, his living presence, to be with us through your Holy Spirit, for guidance, wisdom, and all that is. We give you the glory. In Jesus' name we ask. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Everyone, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have personal appearances. Personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the City Commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of the meeting by calling City Clerk Tabitha Sharp at 316, sorry, Assistant City Manager Tabitha Sharp, at 316-321-9100 by 5 o'clock PM the Tuesday preceding the meeting. Presentations are limited to 10 minutes, and any presentations for information purposes only, and no action will be taken. And it doesn't appear that we have any personal appearances there. Let's move on to public comments. Persons who wish to address the City Commission regarding items not on the agenda and that are under the jurisdiction of the City Commission may do so when called upon. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and any presentations for information purposes only, and no action will be taken. Is there anyone here who would like to make public comment tonight?
So is this where we get to talk about why you guys are here tonight on the agenda?
No?
No, this is general public comment.
Okay, well, my general public comment is about the homeless shelter. So do you want me to wait?
So the public comment section is for items that are not on the agenda. And since that's on the agenda today, it's not necessarily available for the public comment section during the time, during the consideration of the ordinance, it's actually on the agenda. I don't think the commission at that time will get to decide if they're going to entertain comment.
Okay, well, I have to wait.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other public comment? General public comment?
Uh, Mayor?
Yeah.
May I make a public comment?
You certainly may.
Okay. Couple of commission meetings ago, I made a comment about a tree. And I have received emails and messages and have been stopped at Walmart in different places wanting to know, what's going on with the city and the tree? Well, it's an inside joke. When I first came on the City Commission, one of the things that I asked for at Christmas was to have the Christmas tree put back at the intersection of Main and Central like it was in my childhood. And instantly Brad Meyer and I were head to head over why we could not do a Christmas tree at the intersection of Main and Central. Anyway, that's been going on for eight years, and he and I are still going back and forth on it. But there is no tree gate in the city. This is just me continuing an inside joke with the Christmas tree of my childhood.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilkinson. Appreciate the clarification. So we want to consent agenda on tonight's consent agenda. We're considering the approval of City Commission meeting minutes from November 20th, 2023, City Commission work session minutes from November 29th, 2023, and City Commission meeting minutes from December 4th, 2023. We're also considering the approval of appropriation ordinance number 11-23 in the amount of $2,447,620.99. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. There's nothing on old business, so we'll move on to new business, which is consideration of an ordinance approving their request for a special use permit for transitional housing at 424 West Central Avenue.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioner, Butler Homeless Initiative Incorporated has made this request for consideration of a special use permit and a property located at 424 West Central Avenue. That property is currently Zon C1 Commercial District, which allows for the request of a special use permit for a transitional housing facility. If you recall, the City of El Dorado zoning ordinance defines a transitional housing facility as a facility that's not occupied by more than 30 residents with staff members as needed, which provides transitional housing for the purpose of facilitating the movement of homeless individuals and families for the permanent, for two permanent housing, and which may also include providing ancillary services such as employment counseling, vocational training, dining, food preparation, and individual or group behavioral health interventions. The Planning Commission held this public hearing on November 16th. They voted seven to one to recommend denying the special use permit to the City Commission. Within your packet this evening, you'll see the map of the buffer area around the proposed property for the special use permit request. Minutes from the Planning Commission meeting, BHI's management plan for the facility, which is a requirement of the special use permit, is to provide a management plan, how the facility would be operated, how individual staff members would be trained, policies, procedures, that sort of information. And then attached, you have a few letters of supports that were provided to the Planning Commission members as well. So for your consideration tonight, there's three avenues. One would be going along with the Planning Commission's recommendation. To overturn that recommendation, it would take a two-thirds majority of the City Commission, so four votes, or even returning to the Planning Commission with specific details on something you want them to look a little further at.
Thank you, Scott. So we had, we've had, leading up to this, we had a Planning Commission meeting that had a public hearing, had presentations from BHI and from community members in support of and maybe in an opposition to the project. And that resulted in the vote that led us here tonight as well. We had a work session last Wednesday where the commission had an opportunity to kind of discuss this and get some more details from staff. And so that's what puts us here tonight for this conversation. So as we get ready to enter discussion, do we have a motion on the front end to lead us into a discussion point? We have three options, as Scott said, the motion to approve, the motion to deny, or the motion to return to the Planning Commission.
I move to approve an ordinance for case number 23-08-SUP, requesting a special use permit for transitional housing to be located at 424 West Central Avenue.
We have a motion. Do we have a second for that motion?
I would second that.
So we have a motion and a second, so it's time for discussion.
Curiosity now. She's moving that we take what the City, the committee recommended to us. Is that correct?
No.
She's taking that that be revoked. I mean, did that be revoked?
Overruled.
Yes, the ordinance, as the motion stated, the ordinance is, the motion was to approve the ordinance. So the ordinance is what grants a special use permit.
Oh, okay.
So this is a motion to overturn or overrule the
Okay.
the Planning Commission. So open for discussion now amongst the commission.
I don't mind talking, Mom. Okay? I've thought about, huh?
I'm going to scoot my phone around. I can hear you. Sorry.
I've thought about this long and hard. And so I wrote stuff down, so pardon me while I look down and I read what I wrote, okay? Number one, I'd like to start off by saying that I fully support the efforts of the Butler Homeless Initiative. I've been involved with raising funds for them through a grant for the Elks Foundation. I participated in the play we had, the raise that we had for them, to provide them money to have a home. I feel that the city should provide support for BHI by doing the following. Number one, help look for grants. Number two, provide insight on the zoning issues. Number three, determine if we can provide financial assistance to BHI to allow them to have more money to buy on a, maybe a bigger property. Number three, consider having a City Commissioner serve on the VHS Committee as an ad hoc member if they will accept the offer. Now, like everything else, there's always another part of this. Unfortunately, I feel that I need to support the recommendation of the zoning committee for the following reasons. Number one, item 3A. I do not feel, and by the way, that deals with the property and the surrounding issues with it, okay? Number one, I do not feel that this property will fit the needs of the BHI committee. With their current growth rate, they might be out of room in one or two years. Then what do you do? Now, I'm just going by what they've talked to us about, about the number of people that come by there and the things that happen. The second reason I have for not supporting it is item 3F. And it's not as heavy because I tend to agree that I haven't seen statistics supporting there could be a problem. But I feel like we need support the superintendent schools on her issue of security and welfare of our children. One incident, no matter how big, no small, would be devastating to our community as well as the homeless initiative itself. So I will vote no on the issue.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments?
I'll go next. Like Leon, I wrote my comments down so I would remember them. Only I typed them so that I could read my writing. Last week, we had a work session, and the special use permit for BHI was a topic of discussion. Near the end of our discussion, our city engineer and our city attorney reviewed the six items the Planning Commission was to consider before making their decision. There was additional questions and discussion on the six items by the commissioners. And at that point, I suggested we take the information in our packets and reread all the information we received before tonight's meeting. The information included a memo from the city engineer to the city commissioners, his memo to the Planning Commission concerning BHI's request, the minutes of the Planning Commission, a management plan from BHI, a letter from First Presbyterian Church's session asking for approval of the SUP, a letter of support from the Substance Abuse Center of Kansas, and an email of support from the South Central Mental Health. I had already read all the information before the meeting and had watched the Planning Commission live. Over the weekend, I read the information in the order it was presented. And when I reached page three of the information submitted from BHI, I stopped reading. This page lists the number of people served since the end of the pandemic. In 2020, they served 100 people. In 2021, it was 195 people. In 2022, they served 228. And in 2023, they served 309. When I saw that of the 309 people served, that included 56 children. I could read no further. I was saddened and sickened by the thought of 56 children suffering from homelessness in our community through absolutely no fault of their own. Most of the children were under the age of eight and all but three under the age of 10. These children were from intact or single family, single parent families. These numbers should not be acceptable to any of us. BHI also serves veterans. I find it interesting that in November, we had a celebration of Freedom Parade. Banners of veterans lined Main and Central, and activities were held showing our thanks to the veterans for their service. Yet two weeks later, during a seven-inch snowstorm and frigid temperatures, they had no shelter. BHI stays in contact with these veterans and works to get them connected to the Veterans Administration in Wichita, which has the services they need. During the pandemic, there were COVID monies available to house the homeless in motels. However, that money ran out in July of this year. BHI is not asking for money from the city. They have proved to be self-sufficient. They are only asking for a permit to serve the most vulnerable people, which in the last three years has included children in our community. We have sidestepped this problem for years. As a community, we have overlooked those in need. We complain about them when we see them in parks, walking downtown, sleeping on steps or the benches downtown, or begging for money at the entrance to the Walmart parking lot. When are we going to realize that we can help those who want and need help? This is more than a zoning issue. As one lady at the public hearing said, this is also a humanitarian issue. I would ask the commissioners to consider overturning the decision of the Planning Commission and grant BHI a special use permit. If we are not willing to address it now, then the question becomes, when will we? If the location is not acceptable, then what location is? We cannot continue to ignore this issue in our community. If this request is turned down, then it falls on the commission to act and work with BHI and other stakeholders to figure out how we can help and where a shelter can be located. If this request is denied, then it becomes the commission's responsibility to start the necessary discussions.
Okay. Um, man, welcome to the commission. I'll just jump right in this. I'm sure I, like everybody else up here, has put a lot of thought into how I wanted to vote or how I felt I needed to vote this evening. I've read the emails. I've talked to the people. I've done all the things. And there's no doubt that there's been an emotional response from both sides. But I feel like it's our job up here to kind of weed through that and get to the facts and look at where those lead us. One thing that's been pretty consistent, though, is everybody that's reached out, they've all said, we have a problem and we need to help them, right? But then it comes back to the not in my neighborhood thing, okay? So we know we need to help them, then the question goes, where do you put them, right? Residents don't want it in their neighborhood. I can understand why. Businesses don't necessarily want it around their business. I can understand why. If we look at places that El Dorado wants to develop, right, so you put it there, well, does that hurt the development of the city? So there's a lot of things to factor in as we're going to make our decision. And one of the things I looked at is where can you put it? Where can you put it that you can carve out all those cons and solve those problems? And at the end of the day, there's nowhere you can put it. There's nowhere you can put it where there's not a business. There's nowhere you can put it where there's not residences. There's nowhere you can put it where there's not a chance for development. So we can't solve any of those concerns, as valid as they may be. We can't stick it in one single location and carve all those out. The other thing that we can't do is we can't continue to ignore the problem. You know, I think, you know, there's going to be a segment of the homeless population that we see that are going to stay homeless, regardless of if there's a BHI or anything else. They're going to, that's how they're going to choose to live. And short of them breaking the law, Constitution says they can live like that. And, you know, we can't change the Constitution or take away their rights because we disagree with how they live. So as I've studied and I've looked at the criteria that's been laid out in front of me and I look at the facts, I just have a hard time believing that it doesn't fit the zoning uses for that area. So I would be in favor of granting the permit.
Thank you.
One thing I definitely agree with everybody that spoke on is I think that the city needs to be heavily involved with BHI moving forward to figure out a location. Whether that location is here, wherever that we come up with, I think there's some things that we could do to help, you know, to help get that done. One thing I think it's important is that we continue to support our advisory boards. I haven't heard it much up here, but what the Planning Commission did was very difficult. Me and Bill both sat on that committee, and their decisions are based on the comprehensive plan as well as the six criteria that we've all talked about. And as I look at those six, you know, there's three areas that I definitely think that there is some areas that we need to focus on. The location, I don't feel the building is large enough to accommodate what they're hoping to do. When you see the numbers, that 300 and whatever, 323, I believe, I think this shelter would hold 30. I think we need to try to find a larger location. I understand that a larger location costs more money. I definitely understand that. I also think that we need to figure out a way to help remove any of the roadblocks that they have. I know that last year we had another opportunity for Butler Homeless Initiative, but the church didn't want to be rezoned, if I remember correctly, I think what that was. And then this time, it's the building size or location. I definitely think that we just need to try to work together to figure something out. But as the building sits, I would be in favor of upholding the Planning Commission's decision.
Thanks, Scott. So I made a handful of notes, too, and then my iPad died, so I'm trying to read from my cellphone. Even with glasses, it's difficult. So I am very supportive of the work that BHI has done and continues to do. I think that all of us in our community recognize that we have homelessness in our community, and we also recognize that it's a complex issue that requires a compassionate response. And BHI has led that response for some time now, and I'm very appreciative of that. I think the, what Kelly said, what all the commission up here so far has said is that this commission and future commissions need to take a very active role in helping to address this issue, working with the community, working with BHI, and working with the other stakeholders throughout the community to find some solutions. You know, as I look through the, and to Kelly's point, I also served on the Planning Commission prior to this and became intimately acquainted with the comprehensive plan and this process throughout my time on the Planning Commission. The general compatibility with the adjacent properties is one that causes some concerns for me in that this, in that the location in proximity to the school, it just raises legitimate concerns about compatibility with those properties as well as the overall safety, health, and comfort and general welfare of that neighborhood, which was expressed that night. We have the challenge often during this conversation of, you know, we all think there's a problem, but not in my backyard or not in my neighborhood. We've got to figure out a better way to help address that. You know, when we look at those six pieces that Ashlyn mentioned that we've all talked about, they range from kind of the the bigger picture compatibility issues, maybe the bigger picture safety issues, to the very finite things like are utilities available at that location? So there are some that are very easy to say, yes, there's utilities available. It's accessible for the trash truck to get to it and those municipal services. So when we talk about size and location of the property, that's the, and then, of course, the proximity and the compatibility with the adjacent properties, those were the areas of my concern. I believe that the commission as a whole needs to work with the community to take a comprehensive approach. Kendra and I have talked about this some, and I am, as are, it sounds like everyone in the commission, I am very committed to working with the community on, through this issue and through future issues as it pertains to homelessness specifically. But I think that, in my opinion and in my reading of this, we need to look to explore alternative solutions that align both with the zoning regulations, which are critical, but also that will address some of the specific concerns raised by this location. I'm going to read from some, from an email that the city manager sent, and I think it really kind of, for me, struck home to kind of how, what my view on this is and how to address this moving forward. It may be time for us to consider a different approach to the issue, a collaborative approach that solicits input from various stakeholders, that looks at several points, several options for a shelter location, and have a better chance of getting approved. "These stakeholders represent community interests and would include BHI and other community groups. Residents from around the proposed sites should be consulted early in the planning process so their questions and concerns can be legitimately addressed as reasonably as possible." The idea is to have, is to, the idea would be to have neighborhood buy-in before the proposal even goes to the Planning Commission. As we've heard from, as we all know, as we know just in watching what's going on in our community and in our country, and as we've heard from BHI specifically, homelessness is a very complex issue. And to Commissioner Scribner's point, you know, there are some homeless that will want, will always remain that way, and that's their decision. And there are some, certainly, that we need as a community to come together and help. And we need to start to really address that as a community. Sometimes it seems like the city and the community are against BHI's efforts to establish transitional housing. I think the difficulty is the city needs to work within our regulations while balancing those values of the stakeholders that are directly involved. So from my perspective, you know, I think it's critical that we, as a commission, engage in a very constructive dialogue with those stakeholders and we find a way to move forward and socialize it with the neighborhood that we're proposing and get that buy-off on the front end. And what that will do for us is hopefully allow the Planning Commission to be able to have a public hearing that isn't going to be, I guess, you know, as divided as the Planning Commission hearing was. It will allow us an opportunity to educate the community as a whole, and specifically that neighborhood as well, to be able to get some buying from this. So I'm encouraging all of the groups involved to, as well as the City Commission, to work towards a solution that the community, the city as a whole, and the neighborhoods can get behind. So we have, is there any further discussion? Any other questions? Okay, so we have a motion to approve ordinance for case number 23-08-SUP, requesting a special use permit for transitional housing to be located at 424 West Central. All those in, is it roll call? Am I reading this wrong? Okay. My iPad's dead, so I'm trying to make sure I do this right. All those in favor of the motion to approve, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
So this motion to approve the ordinance did not pass. And I think we are done there. I think it's an opportunity for us, and as Kendra, Commissioner Wilkinson and I have talked before, I think that we need to work with David, work with the commission to start actively pursuing a solution and how the commission can be involved in making this a success for BHI. And I'm committing, Kendra, to working with you and taking the lead on that. And I appreciate, I very much appreciate your input there.
I will take the lead.
Huh?
I will take the lead.
I know you will, Kendra. But I'm all in with working with you on it. So that is all for new business on tonight's agenda. No discussion items. We have City Commission and Advisory Board updates, and we'll start with Commissioner Wilkinson.
I have nine, you'll probably be here, ABC. I have nine, you'll have to be here, FABC.
I will. That was on my iPad. Off here. Leon, what do you have?
I don't have anything right yet.
And you're not on any advisory boards, so you have a commission update to check.
I think so.
The Friends of the Library has Give Back Night at Spangles tomorrow night, 5:00.
Go get some Spangles tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, 5:00 p.m.
Tomorrow night, 5:00 p.m. Spangles. So we had, we had an EF, oh, wait, oh, wait a minute.
There's some transition kind of happening on the FABC. We had, we have some new school board members, so the, so Norm Wilks, who's served on the FABC for eight years, I think, at least. And then prior to that was the finance person at USD on the FABC. He's rotating off, and, so is that the only one on 490 that's getting replaced? Because Rob Lane was the other one.
Yes, Rob Lane is the other one, and we don't know who their place was going to be yet.
Yeah, we don't know who they're going to be. So it was Norm's last meeting, it was a good opportunity. Norm has done a lot, and he handled the books for FABC, and we're really appreciative of everything that Norm did through this process. There were a couple of issues that we talked about, one being the turf and track replacement. When we built the facility 10 years ago, 11 years ago now, we bought tenure turf, and the turf technically has been laid down almost 12 years ago now. So we got our life out of it. They've preserved that as well as they could. One of the concerns this year specifically were some injuries, both at the high school level, in soccer and in football, and at the college level, in soccer and in football, that can likely be directly attributed to the condition of the turf, the slickness of the turf, some ACLs and some other problems. And so, it's, I think, become more critical than it has been in the past to explore replacement for the turf. The administrators gave us kind of a general estimate. They're going to go out to RFP for the turf and track replacement, but it's likely a million-dollar project that'll be funded through the fundraising, some fundraising and some funding opportunities through the three entities. So that was kind of, that was really the biggest, oh, so the turf will be replaced first, and then the track would be replaced in the next offseason. Because once they replace the turf, we need to, we're on a timeline to get turf stretched and replaced prior to the next season starting. And with an RFP process, they likely won't dive into that until June, late May, early June. And that probably, and we'll know more when we get the RFPs, but that probably, that June 1st to August 1st timeline probably is not enough time to do the entire track in the turf. So the goal would be to do the turf first this year and then do the track next year. The track needs it. We have some drainage challenges, we have some delaminating of the track. We've been able to maintain that. But it's, in the whole scheme of things, it's the least-used portion of the facility. You know, we get a couple of track needs a year. Of course, there's a lot of practice that goes on there, which is important, but we haven't had the injury concerns from the track that we have with the turf. So we've moved our meetings, which were quarterly, we've moved our meetings to monthly. So I have another meeting in January to determine, hopefully have the RFP ready to go. And I think we're looking for the response on the RFP by the end of January to be available, our February meeting. Does that sound right? So they'll present the RFP to us and let us know kind of what they're looking for, and then we'll get those responses and address them in our February meeting. The administrators, David and Dr. Kroll and Jennifer, are working together to kind of figure out the funding behind it. So those were the big pieces. Just kind of for this commission, a big ask and support from the rest of the FABC, the other entities, was to make sure that the new turf solution is one that we can do other things on besides football. When we built that facility 12 years ago, there was the general idea that we'd be able to have concerts and other things there as a venue, and that hasn't been the case. And part of that was because of the base that was put down for the turf. You couldn't pull a stage out onto the field or drive a truck out on the field. So the desire as we move forward is to build that in a manner that allows us to do that so that we can have another venue in town and hopefully get some more activity at BG besides football and soccer. They'll come back with those responses and those ideas. But they'll send that RFP out to all of the turf people. Those were the big items. We didn't have any bills due this month, which was kind of awesome. Didn't have some new checks.
If we have a couple of questions about that, can we ask you now? Or, like, just about the turf, like, what's the injury thing? Is that the type of turf or, I mean, like, is it something you need to upgrade to a different?
Well, it's a little bit of both. So there's newer technology with the turf, so there'll be newer, but it's, if you think about carpet in a house, and you've got that path that gets worn down in the carpet, right? And so that path, that carpet sits a little differently than the rest of the carpet. It's a lot like turf. We do a lot to maintain that turf, but there are just what they would call slick areas. And so, a great example in soccer is, is the soccer ball is traveling faster on the turf now when you kick it than it was originally because the turf is more matted down and slicker, then it's not as plush and thick. So those are the areas where it's, the turf, what they, I'm clearly not a soccer player, but they...
Never guessed.
Nor am I a basketball player. But the turf is slicker and it's harder to grip. And so there's two things that will happen. Number one, we'll look for newer technology in the turf. But just, even if it went to the exact same technology we had, just having the new carpet or the new turf would make a difference.
Because I noticed, like, if you watch it on TV and it's raining, like, we played at Coffeyville, their turf looks really shiny. Theirs is older, too. It's older than ours is, so I was just curious.
So that's a problem. So when it gets damp, that's, that's...
It's really, that's when it's...
Very slick. And those have been, the majority of the injuries have been during that time, that type of weather or that type of environment. So that's it for me, FABC, I think, from myself and maybe on behalf of the commission, unless they object. This is the final meeting before Christmas, so in the new year. I'm hopeful that everyone has as merry of a Christmas and happy New Year as they can and stay safe. And I'm really appreciative of all the work that staff has done this year, and we're able to kind of close the year out from a city perspective, I think, in really good shape. So thank you, David and staff, for all that you guys do. And we'll now go to the city manager's report.
So you may recall at some point, I think it was April, May, the fire department submitted for FEMA's SAFER grant. That would have funded three firefighters for a couple, at least up to five years, I don't know what the exact provision, but we received word from FEMA that we did not receive that funding. So that will be something that the commission will have to discuss as part of the budget proceedings coming up. Do we want to continue to apply for grant funding? It is a competitive process. And even if we were to be awarded, we would eventually have to fully fund those positions anyway, or is this still a priority of the commission? Or do we want other options? So that, we received word for that. In your email this past week, you may have received, or you should have received, an email about joint meetings with the advisory committees. We'll be starting the first one of those on January 31st. That's a work session with Experience El Dorado, and that will help them kind of develop some of the, well, the idea is to have a discussion between the commission and the advisory board so that they have some direction from you all in terms of what you would like to see, what their priorities should be, things like that, and then just generate a dialogue about that specific area. So for example, under Experience El Dorado, do we want to continue with the Gold Fest? Do we want to look at a different activity or event? Do we want to be both? What is that one like? And then I think there's going to be some other things with respect to Gold Fest, if we do do it again this year, which I anticipate you all are going to do that. But if we did this year with our base grant project on Central, there will be some logistical challenges for having it the same way we've been having it. And so it may need to relocate to a different venue. And so that may be an opportunity to test some options or some alternates, if you will. So that will be something to talk about as well. So that's the first one I'll shoot, again, as January 31st with the Experience El Dorado Committee. At our next meeting, which will be, the work session we'll talk about first, but that'll be next year, we'll be kind of talking about liaisons for you all to serve on these advisory committees. This could be an opportunity for you to change, if you want to do that, or if you want to stay with where you're at, that's perfectly fine, too. It's an opportunity in that discussion. I know that since we have a new commissioner, Commissioner Scribner, that will have to figure out kind of where she wants to serve, and then obviously kind of figure out where you all want to go as well.
So can you do us a favor? Can you get a list emailed to the commission of what people are currently serving in the committees that we currently have representation on, and who has represented those for how long and so forth? And then also a listing of our advisory committees, because the conversation around creating a liaison for you to make sure that we've got a liaison for each of the advisory committees, and that will kind of give us a picture of what we're looking at moving forward. Especially for Commissioner Scribner, who's new, to be able to see some areas, maybe some areas of interest.
Can we have, on those advisory committees that we are asked to appoint people to, can we have the commitment level for that so that we don't ask somebody, we can say, "This is what's expected of you, should you sign up?"
Yep, absolutely. Let's see, we also have a new tool out that we just went live with that we're pretty excited about. It's called Balancing Act. This thing does a couple, this tool does a couple of things, but one of the things we're using for now is to get public input with respect to excess sales tax projects. So staff submitted $2.4 million worth of projects. We have $1 million to allocate. And so this tool gives us an opportunity for folks in the public can go to our website and they can click the Balancing Act link, and that will take them to a webpage where they will have $1 million to spend and they can basically prioritize the projects as they see fit. So it's a good opportunity for them to kind of see the, one of the, a very small, college perspective balancing, some of the budgetary challenges that you all have to deal on a very small level, and at the same time, they also get an opportunity to provide input that the excess sales tax committee can utilize in forming its recommendation to you all. So if you have some time, you might go and check that out. It's on our website, and I think we probably push it on Facebook and everything else as well. That is until January 5th. So folks do have a couple of weeks to get those responses in. We also, this is kind of the first time we've used it, but the goal is also to use it, it's an interactive budget tool where people can, one of the modules will allow people to kind of put in their payments, but they'll be able to interact with the budget. So, you know, we can raise revenues here, or we can decrease expenses here, and then they can submit their own budget for consideration during the budget process. So that's kind of the second module that we'll be rolling out a little bit later on this year. City Hall will be closed on Friday and Monday because of the Christmas holiday, and then we will also be closed on Monday next week for the New Year's holiday. That's all I got.
Okay. Anything else for the, go to the order? Consider a motion to adjourn?
I would adjourn.
Motion to second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.